Brad, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for October 28th to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
James?
Here.
Candy?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Donnie?
Here.
Josh?
Here.
If I could get approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Donnie?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Approval of September 23rd minutes.
I move we approve the minutes, Donnie.
I second it.
Uh, roll call.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
No old business, we'll get to new business. I'm gonna call the public hearing meeting to order. Uh, item number one is a variance request. Aplicants requesting a setback variance at 807 via Sangro on approximately .25 acres, more or less, on this parcel. At this time, I'll open it up to citizen comment on item number one. Anybody online?
No.
I will close item number one. Item number two is a rezone request. Applicant is requesting a rezone from R3 Residential and C2 General Commercial to Agricultural at 256 Tesaro Street, approximately 5.17 acres. Parcel is provided. At this time, I'll open it up for citizen comment. Anybody online?
No.
I'll close item number two. Item number three is a rezone request. Applicant requesting a rezone from a C1 Light Commercial and Agricultural to C1 Light Commercial at Fletcher Avenue on approximately five acres. Parcel is provided. At this time, I'll open it up for citizen comment. Anybody online?
No.
I'll close item number three. Uh, item number four is a public hearing for a formal hearing on the changes discussed in the Tawny Town Master Street Plan. We do have signs, uh, or visuals up here if you want to take a look at any of those. Uh, Brad, do you have anything on that?
No, these were the things we discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting before we moved to City Council. It was not published in the newspaper, which we did at this time, but we want to make sure we had visuals if anybody wanted to take a look at it before we send this on over to City Council for review.
Do I have any citizen comment on the Master Street Plan?
No.
Nobody online? I'm going to close item number four. I'm gonna adjourn the public hearing. I am going to bring to order the Board of Zoning and Adjustments for variance request. Applicants requesting a setback variance at 807 via Sangro, Sangro on approximately .25 acres. Is this you, Brad?
Yes. So, the owner of the property, Mr. Tommy and Ms. Mary Reddick, is requesting a setback variance from the standard setbacks requirement in the R3 zoning, uh, for the city's zoning ordinance to locate a storage building partially within the required yard. As we went through there and reviewed this, uh, as you have the layout of everything, uh, we did, did a formal, formal review and looked through this. We feel like this is adaptable within the setback request. Uh, owners here to discuss. Should you need any, any questions answered, uh, typically what we do, let people know that if it does fall within easements or anything within that sta- uh, within that setback, they are required to move them. And so, everyone usually is aware when we talk about this. But, uh, from the standpoint of the, of the, uh, planning, uh, planning staff, we recommend approval of this, uh, variance request.
Very good, thank you, sir. I will open it up for citizen comment if there's any citizen comment on it. And I assume there's none online, but I will ask.
Nope.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion first, commission, before we discuss.
Motion to approve variance request at 807 via Sangro.
I'll second.
Motion second. What questions do you have about it? If any. There were a couple of statements in there for approvals of it, so just to make sure you got that.
We did have one email that came through today, which added, was added into your packet. So, you should have that.
The third one, yes, very good.
But we did not have any, uh, objections. All were voted to approve.
Okay. If no questions or comments, uh, commission, I will entertain a, uh, mo- or a, uh, roll call on this, and this is for approval of the variance request.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
I'm gonna close the, uh, Board of Zoning, adjourn the Board of Zoning of Adjustments. Call to order the Planning Commission meeting. Item number one. Applicants requesting a rezone from R3 Residential and C2 General Commercial to Agricultural at 256 Tesaro Street, approximately 5.71 acres. Brad?
Okay. Uh, this property in, uh, on Tesaro Street has a couple of zonings currently. It's zoned R3, and the southern portion is zoned, uh, C2, approximately on 5.17 acres. Uh, it's owned by Chad McKenzie Tesaro, and they're, and, uh, the owner's requesting a change to zoning to A, to build a farm and barn, uh, or any accessory building, and it has to be permissible under our zoning regulations. As we look through this, and first, let me state this, every, anybody that comes in, I do try to do my very best to make it accommodable, uh, for someone to make this work. Uh, the one thing that was striking me after we started doing some research on this is the future land use category is our Heritage District. And the Heritage District, uh, goes a lot, uh, extremely to the west of Barrington. Uh, and you can see here in the, in the middle, middle screen, that, that is the purple area. Uh, but that is the Heritage District, uh, for future land use. So, as we review this plan for rezoning, rezoning does take a lot into effect with the future land use. And as it comes out, to looking at this, and, and as the current use that you see, your current zoning that we see, everything around it is still R3 or C2. We think this is still a prime commercial area. Uh, so as we begin to, to research this a little bit farther out, uh, and, and one thing I will say also, uh, we will do our very best going forward if we need to look at this conditionally, but as for a rezone, uh, the planning staff has recommended denial on this. Uh, but again, this is your opportunity. We did have comments for approval, uh, but just did not fit within the future land use. And so, that was the one thing that it kept coming back to me, and also the fact that we still have a strong presence of commercial there. But, again, this is your, your call. Uh, we will definitely work with the owners to, to whatever we need to do if you decide to follow recommendation or you try to go on your own. So, uh, but staff has recommended denial on this.
Thank you. I'll open it up for citizen comment. I'm number one of the Planning Commission. Please state your name, address, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
I am Larry Ardemoney, 657 Ardemoney Road, uh, and I, I understand completely the Heritage part, but just in the past, let's say, year, we've had one to the north of a building. We just authorized one for the winery to build, so we're either gonna be yes or no. Uh, it's the way I feel as a city. Uh, that's, that's how I'm looking at it. So, you guys do what you need to do. I'm just a voice, but if we're gonna allow people to do something, then change our mind halfway through, I, I kinda, I kinda think, like, sometimes there's somebody else on this board that kinda feels the same way I do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Anybody online?
No.
I will entertain a motion, and we can discuss after the motion.
Make a motion to approve the rezone for 256 Tesaro Street.
I'll second.
Donnie? Motion and second. Okay, comments, what y'all got?
Well, I, I wanna understand more. There's not a house on it now.
Right.
And the owners wanting to build a barn on it?
A farm and a barn.
A what?
A farm and a barn.
Define a farm.
Well, it would probably be more of a farmhouse.
A farmhouse?
Yeah.
A farmhouse and a barn.
And typically, what we see is, um, from the standpoint, is the accessory building in our codes, especially in the R3, as it is currently stated, R3, they can only build up to a certain percentage of their primary residence. If they want to build a barn that is, uh, at least the same square footage, that does have either RE or agriculture, the only two zonings that that is allowed. So, that is one reason they're looking to do this.
Explain more about the Heritage District and, and when that, when that could move into that area.
The Heritage District is something that, uh, we started developing, and you guys have seen plans in the past, but it's probably been over a year ago, uh, that this has come to the forefront, that we wanted to establish a, more of a downtown district for the city of Tawny Town. And as we've done that, we've encompassed a certain area, uh, for this to kinda work its way in with that district, uh, that will be designed, just as we're doing like the overlay district currently for 412, there will be design standards that have to, uh, that, uh, people in this district would have to meet if they fall within this specific district. So, this does encompass that. Um, uh, I felt, when we first looked at this, I thought it went too far west where we're at. However, this is what it is currently zoned in the future land use on our comprehensive plan. So, uh, as we go forward in a couple of years, when we revisit the comprehensive plan, if we want to change this, we definitely can, but as of right now, this is where this stands.
Thank you. So, when I'm looking at this, so really, the only commercial property, and it's, it's tough to tell on this, uh, is the very north piece that shows just the land on it, 'cause then there's a house between it that, uh, Tesaro's own.
Yes.
Okay? That's a separate parcel.
Yes.
And then you have this parcel here that's 5.17 acres.
Correct.
And then that parcel to the north east of it is also the Tesaro's family right there. So, you've got, you've got three pieces of Tesaro's before you get to the front part, which is commercial.
Yes.
Um, and that front commercial piece, I looked at it, and it is, it's 268 foot?
That was pretty close, yes.
Somewhere around there on that, on that front piece. Then if you add the, the Tesaro's current house right there with that, that's another 240 feet back to that commercial piece. So, when I look at it, I look at it as, as, as we're looking forward to our 412 piece of the pie. I think we've limited that to the 350.
350, yes.
Um, so that doesn't hit it. In, in, in looking at this, the progression doesn't always look right to us because you wanna go dense, and then you go out farther for agricultural. I get they're not able to do it because it's R3, and you can't do that on that piece of it. So, I, I wish there was a conditional use. We might be able to, to, to provide them to leave it as is, uh, but I don't know if that's an, an option for us to look at.
To build a single-family residence, you can. Accessory buildings, uh, we'd have to look as far as the, uh, category from that standpoint, how big and everything, but, uh, I don't think you would get the size of the barn that they're wanting in this current zoning, that'd be the only thing. However, a conditional use with a single-family residence is a, is a acceptable use in R3.
Okay.
And the other thing, if you read through the report, uh, they would have, they do have a right to appeal to City Council if they choose to do so. They have within 30 days to do so. Um, and so, there again, this is just a recommendation from planning. You guys do have your right to vote however you'd like to see.
Very good. What other comments?
To Larry's point, well, remind me of, uh, what did we rezone at the winery? Was it R3?
I don't know if we rezoned. We did add a building to them. It was already commercial, I believe, but I think we added a, a, a building for them to store some of their, um, merchandise and equipment, but I don't know if we did an actual rezone at that time.
Well, then what, was it a large scale?
No.
So, what was it?
It was an accessory building.
I think, I think it was setbacks is what we.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's correct.
And the, one other building that he was talking about that we let build was.
I think that was just north of that, no, on Barrington, the, the Moon Property, where they had changed that to, to where they could build their.
Yes.
Um, piece on that, on that piece back in the, when you're right next to their house.
So, is there a way to leave it as is and do a CUP? Or are you unsure?
You can do a CUP for the house, but as far as building the barn, if they wanna build the barn as big as that residence or bigger, they cannot do it in R3. They'd have, I think there's, I think it's 67% of the primary residence is what they're allotted.
Are they wanting to build a big barn?
All, all he's got on the application was barn, so, but usually when they want to do this, it's usually a pretty good-sized barn. And that is something like, definitely, we could, we can revisit.
So, for a specific conditional use, can you not designate and, and specify what you expect for that?
Yes.
Parcel? So, if we say the house is 2,500, then we don't have to have, the barn can be bigger than that, or, I mean?
Now, I don't know if you can do that conditionally, because that's still code that you have to do a certain percentage.
I get, I get, I get, I get you. Sometimes us changing the, the zoning doesn't always fit what they're trying to do.
Right.
But then the current zoning doesn't fit what they're trying to do. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a double-edged.
And you, and you can look on the requested zoning map, that's the one on the far right. There are some pockets that are agriculture. However, with a, like I said, what you wanna see is you wanna see a steady progression of our zoning map, and, uh, I mean, that goes straight from commercial agriculture, just didn't think that would be a, an ideal thing to do, so, but, again, that's me looking at.
Candy, you got any, any questions or anything?
Have they recently purchased this land? Is it?
It's probably been in the family for, yeah.
Chad, Chad, the owners, Chad and his wife, I believe, have, uh, I don't know if he, they purchased it, but it, it was transferred into their name.
It's been in the family a while.
I bet I was saying.
Sure has. Chad McKenzie.
Do you think you could revisit if we did a CUP and find out more information if that worked for them?
Absolutely. Yeah, and what, and one thing, and Kevin and I discussed this today, was, uh, with this, if it, if you guys uphold the recommendation, you know, going for, I'm not gonna recharge them anything, just for the fact that, like I said, I'm gonna try to do everything I can to make it work.
So, what if we table it to next month?
I don't know if we can table it, if we got a motion on the table, do we, or, or recommendation or a motion? Can they?
Can we amend the motion?
Do we have to discharge it?
You can. The person who made the motion can withdraw that, and then a new motion can be made to table it.
Okay. I withdraw my motion and make a motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
And if, so you don't have to redo, um, notification requirements? Go ahead and set, I'm, table it until a date certain.
Next month's meeting.
Next Planning Mission.
Yes.
So, we don't have to do anymore?
Right.
Okay, perfect.
Very good. Uh, item number one, tabling till, uh, November Planning Commission meeting, roll call.
Donnie?
Yes.
Sorry, Don, Donnie?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Item number two is request, applicant is requesting to rezone C1 Light Commercial and Agricultural, A, to C1 Light Commercial at Fletcher Road, approximately five acres on the parcel. Brad?
Okay. This property is currently owned by Lip Spaces LLC, and it's currently both, is owned both C1 and Agricultural. Uh, the owner's requesting to change this because of the new proximity of the new police station that Tawny Town is looking forward and doing a large-scale to do. So, uh, within this, uh, once again, we look at the future land use on this. It is, uh, for future land use, residential, commercial neighborhood, so it's a general, it's a general transition in which, uh, public institutions do fall within that, so it will be a natural fit, uh, as far as commercial or civic uses. So, after we reviewed all of this, once again, we had a couple of, of people that came back and so, in support of this, located in your packet. Staff does recommend rezoning this to light commercial only in order to build, along with the conditions that the large-scale development we presented for Planning Commission's approval, uh, going forward for the police station.
Very good. I'll open it up for citizen comment. Anybody online?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move we accept, as stated.
I'll second.
Uh, what comments do you have, commission? You got anything? Oh, nothing?
So, just, uh, if I understand it correctly, they are going to build the police station for Tawny Town?
Who?
The people requesting the rezone.
No, no, there's just, they are currently the owners of the property. And it, they will have to present a large-scale development with the contractor and developer on that, so.
Has the city made an offer to buy the land?
I don't know if an official offer has been made, but.
I asked Chief Jensen, please.
We have discussions on purchasing of the land. It's not come before council yet, but the, the owner of the property has only agreed to sell it to the police department. He has no interest in selling it anywhere else.
Thank you, chief.
Anything else? Donnie, you good?
Good.
Everybody good? Uh, roll call for, uh, approval of the rezone request for, uh, item number two.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Item number three is a preliminary plat. Applicants are requesting a preliminary plat at 1004 Taldo Loop on approximately 13 acres. Zack?
Good evening, commission. So, uh, it's been a while, and, uh, we have our first preliminary plat of 2025, I think, here for your, uh, for your review. This is, uh, called Christina Estates. Um, it's about 13 and a half acres out on Taldo Loop. Uh, the applicant is requesting 12 buildable lots with a detention lot. Um, um, if you look at the density calculation, it's well under one lot per acre, if, for the zoning classification. Um, there are some challenges with this site, namely that, uh, the utility infrastructure is weak in the area, so they are going to have to do some off-site improvements, uh, in order to facilitate the construction of this subdivision. Um, this will also be on septic, says, uh, sanitary, the public sewer system is, uh, over 1,000 feet away. So, uh, with that, it's pretty simple. Um, there are some, my only caveat on this one is there are some off-site improvements that are proposed that will require easements. So, if, uh, those easements can't be gotten, this design may change, and depending on the extent of that design change, you know, we reserve the right to bring this back before you if the subdivision changes as a result, so. Uh, the applicant is here to talk about it if you have any questions, so.
Very good, thank you. I will open it up for citizen comment on item number three. Have any citizen comment? Anybody online?
No.
I'll entertain a motion, commission, before we discuss.
Make a motion to approve, uh, preliminary plat for Christina Estates with conditions.
Second.
What, what questions do you have on it? James?
What is it currently zoned?
Currently zoned R3 Residential.
And we're looking to move it to?
It's staying R3.
It's not, it's not gonna be rezoned.
It's not rezoned.
This is just a preliminary plat.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, instead of, um, three units per acre, it's almost one unit per acre, so it's, it meets that criteria.
And if it doesn't have city sewage, isn't it supposed to be an acre lot?
It would have to, it would have to have a help, help, uh, state health approval.
Which they're all acre lots, it looks like.
Uh, just been looking at the 0.82 units per acre.
You look at the plat, it shows it one acre. They're all exactly one acre.
Okay. What other questions? Seen none, I'll, uh, roll call for, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, Candy.
City engineer. So, right now, the drainage looks okay, but you're going to?
The drainage is a challenge, and they presented an option that I think, uh, could, will work. Uh, it's just going to involve the neighbor to the west, hence the need for a drainage easement to extend storm sewer out across the property and do drainage work. So, um, as shown in these plans, it looks like it goes across two neighbors. Uh, that may change, but, uh, regardless, they need a right to access those properties via an easement in order to construct those improvements, so, you know, things with off-site easement, sometimes neighbors don't wanna give them up, so if that happens, that could change the drainage design, and if it changes the way this preliminary plat looks, we may have to look at it again.
Okay.
Good question. What else, Candy?
Sit.
James?
Did we need a motion with conditions, or?
He did, he did a motion with conditions. He did.
Okay.
No other questions? I'll, uh, entertain a, or excuse me, I will ask for roll call on approving preliminary plat, item number three.
Kevin?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Item number four is a final plat. Applicants are requesting a final plat acceptance on Baralucci subdivision, phase two at Clink Road, located on approximately 40 acres. Zack?
All right, this is phase two of the Baralucci subdivision. This was, uh, zoned under a PUD, uh, and represents the conclusion of the Baralucci subdivision. Uh, it does come complete with a detention pond and a large common area with, uh, with the dog park and walking trail. Um, the site's complete. There was a, during the final, uh, inspection, uh, we do have a problem with the outfall structure being about six inches too low, which is leading to some ponding. So, in order, the applicant has proposed to put up a cash, uh, escrow balance to fix that. Now, they want to do it, but they can't get it done in two weeks, so they're asking for 90 days, and they put up a cash allowance to get that correction made for the final plat.
Very good. I will.
I might have butchered that, so if you have any more questions, let me know.
We will. I'm gonna ask for any citizen comment on item number four. The four.
Good evening, Danny Montez, 714 Belmont Way. Um, on that cash escrow, do we know how much that is, and is that enough if we have to do it ourselves, that it'll cover those costs?
So, the, the, the estimate, I believe, and Tim's here too, if you have any questions, uh, to do that improvement was about $6,500.
There's a letter in their packet, so they do have that.
Right. $6,500, they put up 150% to incentivize them to come back and actually get it done, so it's more than what the anticipated cost is.
Very good. Any other citizen comment? Seen any online?
No.
Now, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we accept.
With, that was the condition of the bond.
Yes.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, very good. Thank you. Escrow bond? Escrow, instead of bond. Got a motion and a?
I'll second.
Second. What questions do y'all have? Seeing none, I will ask for roll call for approval of final plat for item number four, Baralucci subdivision.
Candy?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Item number five is a final plat. Applicants requesting a final plat acceptance on Renly Ray subdivision, phase one, 809 Morisani Road, approximately thirty acres. Is this you again, Zach?
All right. Final plat, phase one, Renly Ray subdivision. This is a, just like you said, intersection of Morisani and Clink Road. This particular subdivision has forty-three lots, forty-one buildable, two non-buildable, one's a big detention pond. I'm sure you've all seen it. About three weeks ago, we did get to do a walkthrough for this site. That particular walkthrough did yield twenty-three punch list items. Now, that was several weeks ago. Last week, they did call for a reinspection. Unfortunately, city staff was not available to do that inspection. I was in Hot Springs yesterday, came back this morning and tried to get out there. It was raining. I'm engineer, I melt in the rain, so I didn't actually get out there to check the punch list. I will say that most of this punch list is cosmetic issues, so a lot of the big infrastructure is done. There is a piece of concrete that dude got a pore. But a lot of it's drainage and revegetation and getting rocks out, so if we went out there today, this punch list would be much lower. I do recommend approval subject to city-approved remediation of the punch list. Made it just in time.
Very good. I'll open it up for citizen comment. Item number five. Seeing none, anybody online?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Commission, what questions do y'all have? Would this, would the final? Would they have to have all these done before a certificate of occupancy is applied to any of the houses? How's that?
So, the city's not going to sign this final plat until the punch list is done.
Okay.
Right? That's the condition. So, while, while it's very lengthy, again, most of these are cosmetic, and they'll probably be done, if not by the end of the week, early next week. So, I don't necessarily like having these in front of you with all these conditions, but per the request, we're here tonight. And again, the city's not going to sign anything until the punch list is done. So that would, that's kind of my caveat, is that to city satisfaction, right? So, it's not like these won't get done. We just won't let you sign them until they are done.
Very good.
Also, Blake's here tonight, if you do want to ask him a question.
Okay, thanks, Blake. Questions, commission?
Of course, I'm always asking about the landscaping. The trees will be planted before you let them do anything.
Absolutely. So, the preliminary plat was approved with a landscape plan that did include street trees. You would see those along Clink Road. As of last week, those weren't planted, but no, no signature until those are planted, in accordance with the approved landscape plan.
Do you think the punch list will be complete within a month?
Yes. I honestly, in talking, I did get a chance to talk to Ground Zero, his contractor on the job. With, before the rains, they were anticipating maybe end of this week. So, it, it was, unfortunately, the timing worked out where they couldn't have it done before tonight, but waiting a whole another month for, you know, a half, you know, a week's worth of work, they asked us to present tonight. Just, it's just kind of one of those where it fell into one of those lines, so. And also, like I said, the city didn't get a chance to go out there and end it last week, even though there's twenty-three conditions, I, most of these are probably done. The one that is most concerning to me was there was some offsite work done across neighboring properties, so, you know, that's something I'm looking forward, make sure those yards are cleaned up. Drive, driveways repaved, ditch lines are reestablished before I sign off on anything, but that's what I'm really gunning for. That work hasn't been done. That particular property owner did ask the contractor to not, hold off, because he's doing, he's fixing his house from hell damage, so he's got his own contractors going in there, and he couldn't afford his drive to be messed up in the way, so the timing's all off, and I, you know, to hold them up a month while he's fixing that, so he can fix this, it's kind of one of those deals where if you, if you, if you trust us, we'll, we'll make sure it gets done.
Right.
What other questions, commission? If not, I'll ask for roll call on approval of final plat for Renly Ray, phase one.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Item number six is discussion of the master street plan. We've discussed it. I will open it up for citizen comment, if you want to discuss the street plan.
And just let everybody know, if, if anybody has any questions, the panel to my left, and probably to your right, what that will be on that easel, that is the adoption of a new street from Clint's all the way up to Artemani. We've discussed that to make that connection, so that is one. The one on my far right, probably to your left, is Liberty and changing Liberty to a minor arterial road, which will be more beneficial to the city as we go through to make the crossing a little bit better. And the one placed in the middle is removing one particular piece of highway that was adopted on the master street plan that really has no effect. So those are the three items that we are looking to adopt the master street plan and then have city council approval. So citizens have a right to, to view this.
Do I have any citizen comment on it? And anybody online?
No.
So I guess I need a motion to move on. If I could get a motion to move this on to city council.
I'll make a motion to move.
Second.
Motion is second. Do y'all have any discussions on it? Everybody good? None, I'll ask for roll call on item number six, master street plan.
Donnie?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And final item is discussion on 412 overlay district. This was not in our packet. We have discussed it. We don't have to discuss it any, we can push it off to next month or week. If you've got questions on it, we can discuss it now, but it's up to y'all on that.
We, we discussed it last month a little bit in depth and had took some of the notes. It was just a matter of the last couple of weeks, we've had other city projects that kind of took the forefront, and so just not able to, to get anything for this, for this meeting, so. If you choose to do so, we can definitely discuss next month. If you want to discuss now, that's strictly up to you. Just did, did not have anything in front of you tonight.
I just, I feel we need to just probably push it, since it wasn't in the packet, but that's.
I agree.
Okay. I get to push a, a motion to table and move to the next meeting. I would accept that.
I move we table it to the next meeting on the 412.
Seconded.
Second?
Next planning meeting?
Yes. That's item number seven.
And who seconded?
James. And roll call when you're ready.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
And there are three items that will be moving to the committee of the whole before it goes to planning, or to, before it goes to city council, and that is the rezone request for the Tesaro, the rezone.
No, the rezone for Tesaro will not.
We table that one. I apologize.
Yep.
Rezone request for item number two will go to Cow, and the master street plan will go to Cow.
Yes.
Items two and three will go to Cow before it goes to city council. You got the staff report in here?
Building report?
Building report. What questions y'all have on it, if anything?
Commercial, commercial permits have slowed a little bit over the last few months, so we have seen a decrease in that. Residential permits have been going up, so with the inclusion of Baralucci and going forward, so we should see some improvement throughout the rest of the year. And with other ones, we feel like 2026 will be a definitely better year than what we're seeing year over year at this time.
Any questions on it? How about comments from staff?
Yeah, one thing to discuss with the planning commission tonight, obviously, next, next month is Thanksgiving, the following month is Christmas. Do you guys foresee any changes in the calendar to discuss anything? And that's primarily what I had for you guys to look at tonight.
So, our next commission meeting.
Will be the 25th of November.
Is that Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
That is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
How is everybody looking for that? Everybody good?
I'll be out of town all that week.
All week?
Yeah.
To be honest, I'm going to be out Tuesday. I'm going to be out that Tuesday. I could do it Monday. Ninety-five percent chance I won't make it back from where I'm going.
On Monday or Tuesday?
On Tuesday. I'm going to be out Tuesday. I'm going to be out that Tuesday. I mean, it's, so if we wanted to change it to Monday, since Donnie's not going to be here? Or is a quorum with three? So, I mean, y'all could still do it on Tuesday.
Okay.
I'm fine with Monday.
Yeah, I mean, I, it depends on the load of that agenda, I think. If there's a load, I'd rather have more than three.
Okay.
I don't know, with the two that we've tabled, is right now is the only thing that I can recall that has been put before applicants, or applicants coming to us, would be those things.
Those two, correct.
Yeah, now, I will say, just talked to Ms. Heather here, who is filling in for Imogen. She will be out, she'll be in Eureka Springs for another meeting, so we will not have, we may have legal representation, but just FYI on that as well.
It might be somebody, I mean, maybe Justin or Tom could swing by, I don't know, but that I'm happy to help, you know, address issues ahead of time too, as well, so y'all just let me know.
So let me ask this then. When do we have to actually tell you the actual drop dead date of when we need to, if we want to move it to that Monday, depending on the?
Well, from our standpoint, I mean, you know, we have to, we have to publish things in the, so usually fifteen days prior if we're doing a rezone or a conditional use in which we've done that.
By that time, you'll know what's on.
Well, no, because we have to publish that in the newspaper for public notice.
Okay.
And we, we let them know when our meeting date is. Yeah.
Let's do that, Ben, if that's okay.
Yep.
Is that okay with the commission on that?
Moving to Monday?
We're going to wait until fifteen days before to see what's on the agenda. Okay? Does that make sense then? You make note of that for me, Brad?
Yeah, and I, I could probably let you know about the agenda, but, because they, you know, everything should be already submitted for next month, but I'm saying adding these two items now is, to my knowledge, is the only two things that really we have as far as what we've tabled tonight.
Okay.
So, but I will, I will definitely take a look at.
And then December, we've got five Tuesdays in December, so.
And that usually falls on the 22nd.
That Monday.
Or, I'm sorry, 23rd, that Tuesday. And the 24th is Christmas Eve, 25th is Christmas Day.
Could y'all look at that for next meeting, if we, if you're all right with the 23rd on that one?
So, so we, we will stay with the 23rd on that?
Well, right now, I think we will just stay with the 23rd unless something changes.
Let me, let me ask you, not for my, you know, doesn't have to be for my sake. Is there any possibility we could do the planning commission on December 2nd? Which, which would be a week later than our plan?
No, that's, that's committee of the whole meeting.
Oh, okay.
Can't do that.
Okay, we'll leave those kind of as is right now, and if we need to address the December one, we can.
Yeah.
If we need to. Okay, comments from commission. Candy?
None.
Donnie?
No comment.
James?
No comment.
Josh?
I got a couple of questions. One, Brad, maybe for you, the updates to the EUL code, landfill code? Where are we at with that?
Well, I will say this, and I was going to make mention of this in the other comment, was that Imogen had a baby, and so.
Oh, wow.
She is out. Yeah, she is out, and, and so I've not got anything back from her on that, so, and we can definitely just, yeah, we'll look at that. We can definitely discuss it. I will. And I will email the office and let them know, but.
Did we not discuss possibly adding that to our, when we're looking at doing the, I'm almost, I'm, I'm terminating, right, gobbling up some people's land out there. What's that called?
Eminent domain.
Eminent domain.
No, we're not stealing it from, we're going to actually go out and, and bring it into our.
Annex.
Thank you. Boy, just going to get out there.
Be your chair, ladies and gentlemen.
So when we start, when we. So when we annex, were we not going to try to add this R3L to the annex piece of it that way?
The R3, he's talking about EUL.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, so, that's great.
Okay.
That's what Imogen was working on, we discussed last month, and she took some notes, so.
EUL and 3L, R3.
Absolutely.
Right.
Okay, very good. What else you got?
And then one, this is just because I want to mainly tell Zach, because he was smelling while I was stepping in, but the asking before conditions are met, I, I understand the developer side, because I do that too. The other side, though, that I wish they would understand, and they don't care because it's a lot of money, but when I do business with somebody or I do electrical contracting, I do not ask for payment, final payment, until the job is 100% complete. And I have said for like five years, I hate when there's a whole slew of conditions and like they don't ju, I mean, just wait. Like, I mean, I do that in business. But, you know, I voted for it.
You probably heard it in my voice. They definitely heard that I did not want to put this on the agenda, so I, I had both the engineer and the ownership group in here begging, so.
All right.
That's right. I, I don't like doing that.
And from Josh, from your standpoint, I mean, when we, we said, discussed this with developer, I mean, that's one thing we tell them, and anybody's ever sitting in some of our planning tech meetings is, especially if they're sitting there and say, hey, these guys do not want to have any conditions, so we do try to, we've been trying to push that more and more.
Right, yeah, understood.
Yep.
And then a quote, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest," Benjamin Franklin.
Very good. Thanks for everybody coming out tonight. Don't forget, there's Friday, 5:30 to 7:30, Halloween in the Park. Josh, Candy, and I will be part of the commission out there. We'll try to do our best to hand out candy.
In costumes.
We are dressing as commissioners, so we will, we will see how that goes.
Unless you have us a costume.
So with that being said, I will ask for adjournment. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.